This will be the June 6, 2018, City Council Workshop, followed by regular meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to call the order, a City Council Workshop, June 6, 2018, approximately 6:45 PM. The purpose of the workshop is to interview board applicants. So, the procedure tonight for the two board applicances, you'll come up to the seat here, have a seat, just tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're applying for the boards. The council will ask you a few questions. At the end of our meeting tonight, there's agenda item for appointments to boards. And that's when we make our appointments. You're more than welcome to stay for our council meetings. If not, then we will notify you from when our, it is our city clerk and will notify you. Okay? All right, we'll get going. So, Marianne, if you would, please. Welcome. If you would, just, we record.
Recording.
Yes, thank you. And tell us about yourself.
I'm Marianne Reece. We bought our home here in Satellite Beach in 2015, it was a snowbird thing. And this August, we moved out permanently. I am a retired teacher, 36 years, and I was four, so I started joining things. One of the things I joined was the Women's Club of Satellite Beach. And I've gotten very involved there. I'm now the Chair of the Conservation Committee. And within that, I've been working at the library. I've been planting and watering and working with the group that's doing that. And I was advised that there might be an opening in the board, or on the board. And I'm very interested in doing that. I, my initial thought at the library, even in this era of social media, should be, could be, the center of a community. And I would like to be actively involved in that.
Thank you. Questions from?
I don't have any questions. I, I will say, since I am liaison to the library board, and I know about the planning and great work on all that out there, it's looking really great out there.
It really is looking good.
It is, it's coming, it's coming along really well. We will have one opening, actually, it actually comes open at the end of June. And I believe we'll end up having another opening in the next three to six months. There's, I think we have another person who is gonna roll off the board. So, my point just being with that is, if we, if you don't get appointed immediately, would you still be interested in being appointed when the next one comes up? I just say that because I believe if we do that, we interview now, and another one comes up, we don't have to go through the whole interview thing again.
Yeah, we don't, because we...
Since we've done that, we'll point that. Okay, that, so, like I said, I, I know, again, I know we have one that's coming up right immediately, and I think we're gonna have another one in three, six months, so I just wanted to make sure that you were available either way.
I am available.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to hear.
Mindy?
Thank you so much for everything you're doing, and I, I think that your tenacity and your, I, I hope that I will be as involved and stay involved. I'm the same personality type, so I think it's, I think it's awesome that you're doing it.
I came down here and said that retirement is not for me, I really need to be involved. And I started looking for places to get involved.
Yeah, I'm a member of the Women's Club as well. Unfortunately, I teach, I teach yoga every Monday morning, and that's when the meetings always are, so I miss everything. So, I just pay my dues, and I'm, I'll help out with the, you know, the Founder's Day and all that stuff, but, thank you so much. I, I think it's wonderful, and your resume is impeccable, so.
Thank you. Question, because of that, and I look at other boards here, are there any other boards that might interest you, Sampson Island working board or anything like that? Or are you, now I'm gonna ask the question to both of you, are you willing to wait for the board for an opening?
I am willing to wait. Honestly, I don't know enough about the others, and I might be interested in them, but to be fair to myself, I don't want to get myself on a board that I really don't know about.
That's perfect.
Whereas, library, you know, has...
Yes, I think it's kind of fits you here. Question, where in New York did you come from?
Well, man.
Okay. So, I'm gonna ask you a question, I ask this to everybody, because I'm always very interested. See, I lived here all my life. So, why did you move to Satellite Beach?
Truthfully, we were looking at things I seen, and we could not afford the homes beachside. And I started looking, and started doing research, and Satellite Beach just kept coming up, schools, which obviously don't really matter now, but is, you know, home values, safety was a major consideration. And the fact that there was such beautiful homes that I took forward, and with the beachside,
Thank you. I just, it's always interested me, I ask that question a lot, so, and thank you for moving to our town, and, again, like I said, we vote at the end of the meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Arlen?
Good evening. All right, I moved here in 1984, it seems like years ago, May 45th, exactly. But that was Indian Harbor Beach, not Satellite Beach, so, so for the library board, it's definitely that. Currently, I'm the Secretary of Director of the Friends of Library in Satellite Beach. I, I'm at good internet sales from Melbourne Library, all their used books are coming out, I sell them on my monthly. I'm the Secretary of the ATAC Alumni Association of Patrick, and also the Chair of the ATAC Memorial Corporation, 501(c)(3) for a short activity. As was in pathology, after is the SIT and then, and I'm here because the Air Force Seven here, so.
Thank you, okay.
So, what do you have, the library board, why the library board specifically, other than the work that you're doing with the other libraries?
Well, Carol Wilkins, I guess you'd say.
Okay.
We all know Carol.
Yeah, we all know Carol.
She didn't say Carol, but we know, I know she's from here. Carol, I knew Carol's author on the Air Force, we worked together at Patrick. So, that's why, well, I'm getting involved in the, with the library figures.
Okay.
It's just a natural progression to make it, to say, well, you know, I figure about what the board does and does not do, maybe I should get involved in it, so.
Thank you.
I, I would just ask basically the same question, as I said before, it looks like we're gonna have eventually two openings, one probably sooner than later. If we don't appoint you to the sooner one, are you okay with waiting to the next one? No, no issue with that? Like I said, I, I think they're probably both gonna happen here relatively soon. So, either way.
Thank you. And like I said before, we, we, it's agenda item, and we go towards the end of the meeting. And I was gonna ask you, but now, I, as I ask everybody, is there any other board? But because you're in Indian Harbor Beach, the library is a board you can sit on where the other boards are residents of the city. So, thank you for, thank you for the work you do there now, also. Great, thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay? Let's adjourn. Let's start back for a regular council meeting at... Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, June 6, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Gibson for a moment of silence and a pledge.
Please stand for a moment of silence. And the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, the podium's open for citizens' comments. This is for non-agenda items, non-agenda items. If it's an agenda item, you're more than welcome to speak under that item. So, at this time, the mics open for non-agenda items. Please come forward, state your name.
Ron Leonard, 620 Denny Road. Used to live down south, Miami area, and we had use of golf carts down there. I know now that we have them here, but they're more like SV laws, under restrictions. They passed a Florida statute about 2014. I know it was reviewed then. Excuse me. The Florida statute was updated in 2015, and allows for golf cart usage down on Keltner Bay, Palmetto Bay, Santa Rosa County, up in the Panhandle. I'd like to submit some paperwork that I can leave with you all, with the regulations and all, to make it for regular golf carts, which are considered, they say, slow-moving vehicles, as compared to the LSV, which is a, I guess, under 25, I think, or something. Anyway, it just says that you would need to have safe tires, effective brakes, there's a couple forms that are filled out by these people in Keltner Bay. The golf course registration is done through the city here, not through the DMV, and they have a one-time charge there of a $60 application fee. And a form that is filled out and notarized by the applicant and presented, and then it's legal to use with a, I guess that would be the reg, a registration for. So, anyway, I'd like to leave those papers for you to look at.
And let me, real quickly here, the city manager and myself have talked on this issue, hearing that it possibly had come up, and I believe what we said is, we're gonna ask staff to bring back a report for the July 3, the July 3 meeting on just what you brought up.
Okay.
Okay? And they are legal in our city, except they have to go through, you know, that registration process. So, we're gonna have staff take a look at it, bring the report back to us on the 3rd.
Okay.
Okay? And if you would, please give Lenora that information, to make a balance to us. Thank you. The public comments still open for non-agenda items. Here are none, closed the citizens' comments portion, up to council comments. Mindy?
It's been a long time since we've, we've been here, and I thought about what I would say, and I just don't have anything to update, other than it's summer and the kids are out of school, and it's crazy. And that's about it.
Just a few things I'd like to say, Chief, nice ceremony last week. Appreciate that, pretty well done. And I'd also just like to pass on, I, I had a neighbor that had an issue, and was able to walk into the fire department, and all I can tell you is, they raved about the great service they got, how he took care of them. I think they actually took him over to the clinic, and been calling and checking up on him, and the clinic's been checking up on him, and, like I said, nothing but great words of the fire department, and how professional they were, and how they took care of everything. So, again, we, we love all those, kudos for our, our staff and our fire department stuff here, so it was just great to hear that.
Great, thank you. I attended the Satellite High School graduation, went really well, even though it was a little wet that night. And Satellite has a new principal, Bobby Pruitt, who is local. Went to Satellite, was the principal at Delora, and kept the council and the city very much informed on what was happening at the school, and I know he'll keep that up at Satellite. So, and we got a new principal at Delora, I'm sorry, I don't have his name, but he's also local. And he went to Satellite, was on the soccer team, and so, a little bit of change there at the two schools, and that's all I have. And next is city attorney's report?
I have nothing.
Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone, especially in the audience, that our Recreation Department has their summer camps going on right now, so if you don't know what's offered, go ahead and pop into the rec department and check those out. There's, I can't tell you how many camps there are right now for our kids. When you go into the rec department right now, you can barely hear yourself think there's so many kids in there right now, so. I also want to remind everyone that hurricane season has begun, so please get your supplies and make arrangements for your pets. We have received a thank you letter from the Cameron family, thanking the fire department for all the help and support they provided for the family. We have a, our annual 21-day salute to the flag has begun, and our flyers are being posted throughout the city, and we are looking for volunteers to help. So, if anybody is interested in doing that, the flags will be, need, will need to be put up and taken down daily from June 14 through July 4, from 7:30 in the morning, and then taken down at 5:30 in the, in the afternoon. Please call the city clerk's office and, at City Hall, for more information if you're able to volunteer. In order to get in preparation for the recommendations for the Space Coast League of Cities, the staff is asking you to begin thinking about your legislative priorities. We would like to put that on the agenda for your next meeting, to talk about how, what we want to submit. So, we would need to have three top priorities. Basically, that would be what you would consider, I guess, countywide, so all the other cities would be interested in that. And then, of course, the staff would need to have your legislative priorities that are specific to the city, so that when we go to Tallahassee, we know what, what you want us to argue.
And, excuse me, we need that to you prior to the 20th?
Correct. I'm gonna go ahead and ask our chief to come up, fire chief to come up, and talk about our ISO report.
So, I got a welcome surprise Monday when I opened up my mail. And I, as you guys know, and from me speaking in the past, about every five to six years, we're required to go through our insurance service office, ISO fire rating, evaluation as it is. And essentially, it is the rating system that is used to judge the fire insurance premium with, on your homeowner's policy. We went through that evaluation in February, got a letter today that we became ISO Class II fire department, which makes us in the 97th percentile of all fire departments in the country. There's 47,000 departments that are evaluated by the ISO system, and Class II, and there's only 1,300 in the entire country that are in a Class II rating, and less than 300 in the whole country that are Class I rating. What is unique about this is that we achieved this without buying a ladder truck. I still want one. Let me just give you, just to talk here in Bemar County, there are two other departments in Bemar County that are Class II also, Cocoa Beach and the city of Melbourne. And when we look at the three departments, what is distinct between us is, is equipment. So, you asked the question, well, how do you do that? Because typically, you need a ladder truck to be able to get that low of a rating. We maximized every other element of the fire department that we had, that we can touch, training, selection of people, how we document calls, how we maintain hydrants, the communication system, believe it or not, that cell phone that irritates you at night, that was a strategic thing not to irritate you, but that was our backup communication system that we actually, our dispatch, because we have a great dispatch system, and our last evaluation out of the maximum points, they were one point less, this evaluation, and saying this to Jeff here, his dispatch center has the rating of what would be called a Class I dispatch center. Their dispatch center cannot get any better, so it's all up to you now. But, but, and, but I bring this up because that's how these things work, it's the relationship between your department heads that get us to where we need to be and stuff. So, I'm gonna throw out a little challenge here. We sat down and we went through the evaluation, and we looked at some areas, because the evaluation had changed in the way that they graded stuff, and I, you know the water work that is going on with the city of Melbourne. We actually had a large hand in that over the last few years. About every three months, I go into David's office, and I tell him to call so-and-so up at Melbourne and harass them, because we knew that we had gaps in our hydrants throughout the city, and that the rule is, is to have a hydrant within 1,000 foot of every structure, but we had large gaps in the hardwoods and, and that area that, and those hydrants were on very small lines, so they didn't even really provide a lot of water. So, we're having a lot of hydrants being put back into the city over this next year, upgrading of water lines and stuff, and when we see that, that, once that is done, we have a couple of things that we're going to do. I will be honest with you, we think that a Class I fire department is within the city's grasp. And that is a big deal. So, what does this mean to the homeowners? Well, in 8th October, with the city manager's permission, in October should be about the time that all the systems get updated for homeowners' insurance and stuff. I'm gonna recommend that we send a letter to every homeowner, telling them to call their insurance company up, and specifically make sure that they know they're in a Class II district, because the rating system means something. I can't tell you if it's gonna be a $5 decrease, I can't tell, just, but it means something. And who should benefit the most by going to a Class II is going to be our commercial properties. That is the benefactors. So, all the stuff is coming around, and we talk about the value of what we provide. Well, this is just one place that you can say, you made your investment, and this was the dividends of that. So, that's all I want to say.
Chief, first, thank you, congratulations, great job, and please tell your staff, thank you very, very much for the hard work. Guys are amazing, things you do in the city, outside of the fire realm, just the health things you do here, pretty amazing. Thank you. Thank you.
As you are aware, the city council meeting in July falls on the 4th, so, in order to present our preliminary budget information, we are requesting to move the July 4 to the regular meeting, or the July 4 regular meeting to, to July 3 on Tuesday.
Okay.
So, we just need consensus for that?
Consensus?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Courtney, since it's an action item, let me make sure I open up for public comment on this action item, moving the regular council meeting from July 4 to July 3. There are no comment, back to council.
I also wanted to let you know that we have, the city of Melbourne is getting ready to do some major pipe replacement work in the city, and they ordered the pipe, which came quite a bit early, so they're storing it at our Jackson Avenue property. We're negotiating a $500 a month lease payment for that, and the insurance can, I think, are wrapping up pretty soon, so we just want to let you know that that, that's gonna be sitting there for approximately six to 10 months. So, we, we don't really want to look at it, but we do want our pipes to be replaced. The other thing, too, is that, along with the city of Melbourne and the city of Cocoa, and the chief mentioned the, a lot of the work that they're doing in that, in the hydrant realm, they're also looking at the redundancy of pipe that's going across the bridge with the city of Cocoa. So, that will be helpful to us, and especially in storms, when they get that done.
At Pelican Beach, there's a big pile of stuff there today, does that have anything to do with what you're talking about?
That's the solar panel, solar canopy.
Okay, great.
That's actually gonna be going in this, this coming week, so that's the FPL solar canopy, that'll include electric outlets for all of our events and the...
A small question on that, Sherwood, it looks like they have to, are they possibly redoing? Do you know? It looks like maybe the slip lining they did, or something, they're re, it looks like they're redoing it. Have you heard anything about?
There's slip lining, the county has slip lining everywhere, so, so, I don't know where the streets, they're on usually...
Like a bunch of stuff out, and then it looks like they're putting new stuff back in, so I...
That's usually what the slip lining is, yeah. But they're all over the place, sometimes I can't tell where they're at, because they have sometimes multiple trucks doing that.
Yeah, the whole street, it's like, doing this, trying to get... Sorry, sorry, sorry.
One question to you, the smoke test, how's it coming?
It's coming, it's going good. It's showing a little less leaks in the northern area, which we expected, since it's newer pipe, and so they're just marching down the areas. But I think what, what it does demonstrate, though, is our city has been complaining, for lack of a better word, harassing, was the one that the chief used, about infrastructure improvements for the last four years, at least. And, so, those are coming to fruition now, so that's good.
Thank you. Any further report, Courtney?
No, that's it.
Questions from council? Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Discuss, Take Action on Results, Cody and Associates Incorporated Salary Survey. Suzanne, thank you.
So, back in 2013, the city did a last salary compensation survey, which essentially the hiring firms to look at how we compare to our competitors, to check our wages and see how we're doing. So, typically, in our market, it's recommended to do it every three or four weeks, so this year we do that, and you might recall, we talked about this back in January, it was part of Site 2, sort of discussion. We actually started out looking at this more urgently because of an issue with retaining corporate workers, employees, you know, they're, they're among the lowest paid in the city, and we kept losing people to dock, they were making, you know, a dollar or two more an hour, and that thing. So, anyway, the end results of the survey is included in your packet. Across the board, there were definitely recommended increases in some positions, but not all, and the recommendation that is in here is to implement those increases to the specific positions that were identified in the study, to do it over a few years' time period, and to sort of move into that, because, you know, we're not trying to be physically responsible with this, but we also know there's value in maintaining competitive wages for our employees, so that is what is for consideration.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a couple. I read through it, and it looked like we were pretty much underpaying on most, but what I did notice is that our incentives were, we were definitely over, not overcompensating, but we were definitely above on everything, I just, I thought that was kind of very competitive. The question I had is, how the, and it doesn't really say in here, maybe it didn't specify well enough for me, is the people that we did choose, that we would have put onto the side, how were they decided? Were they at such a low end of that? And are we bringing them up to the low end, or where was the...
Actually, if you, if you go to page 14 in the actual report, there's an alternative A and an alternative B.
Okay.
And we followed the alternative B, which essentially is the recommendation from the person that did the analysis, is that you adopted pay rates that they provided according, and then you adjust based on the years of service that each person currently in that position has served. And if you read, if you read that, basically says, for each year of satisfactory service and grade, you reward the individual a half percent per year in times recommended pay rate minimum. And what you do is, you take where they started, you do that multiplication, and you see where they're at. And if they're at that point already in their salary, then they're fine. If they're below it, then they're recommended increase. If they're above it, which doesn't happen very often, you know, we just say, go on. That's basically how the math looked out, and that's that spreadsheet at the very end, that's what we got with those numbers.
So, for the individuals, okay. So, those are half cent, those are half percent numbers?
Over the years that they've been in service, yeah.
Oh, the years, okay, that's the math part I was missing. Okay. I was, I was getting very confused, looking at all the, and I didn't know which, which plan we were using, okay.
Chief, questions? Nope. So, basically, it's $35,000 per year. Thirty-four, nine, seven, five. And, and this really puts us in, I think Alan, your department, right? You're going through a lot of personnel.
We have three openings down, and we have a lot of new applications.
And how, Chief, you too, somewhat, in the police?
Well, we don't, we don't have the same problem that the public, public works does. We kind of, we have a lot of other things, so we don't have any budgetable things right now, and when we do have old things, we generally don't have a very difficult time to fill.
Thank you. I know, Alan, you, you've had a lot of that in the last couple of years.
I think the number I used the other night was you've lost nine employees over the last two years, and of those, three were actually, you know, retired, normal retirements or resignations, they were moving on. But the rest were moving on because of other opportunities. So, those opportunities, most gained more money.
The other thing is when we get people in the door, they leave after they find out how much the pay is. Because a lot of the, we also have a 401A that requires the 5% contribution, and then if they have a spouse or family, they also contribute to their healthcare. So, that comes out of their paycheck. And when your paycheck, you know, is as low as the public works starting salary is, they don't want to pay for that, and they go find another job somewhere else.
Yeah, you tell them upfront, but when they hit that first paycheck and all those projections come out, the Allen sense, he actually had one idea, was he was here less than two weeks, you know, he got his first paycheck, and he said, "I can't do this."
It's just nice to know that we realize that it's the pay and it's not the guy running public works driving everybody out, you know. Because, you know, you could guess that until this came out. So, I'll go with your theory that they're leaving for other opportunities, and I couldn't understand why. I mean, you're a great guy, Alan.
I was going to say something about recycling containers and manatees, but you beat me to the punch.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item. Floor is open.
This is Linda Bunting, Codine Associates.
I did, Linda Bunting of Codine Associates.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Linda Bunting with Codine Associates, and our company completed the study, and I just wanted to know if you had any questions?
Right.
More questions, I should say.
I wrote a question down.
I think we're fine. Thank you for helping us out here. I know it's been a struggle for Alan and some departments, and we like to be able to pay fairly to our employees. I think that's important.
Yeah, one thing we did with just discussions were we added a career ladder in the public works.
I was going to bring that up. I think that's a great...
Because I think you need that to therefore give the employees incentive to stay and pay them for their, what they've learned and can put forth with the city.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
I do have one. Well, sorry. It's so, when we're talking about adopting this, we're going to adopt everything that's written in here for the ideas. Well, I was looking at the post-maximum incentive. Is that, at the end of the day, you know, when we get people that cap out and their salaries, and then, you know, we obviously want to incentivize them, is this like a bonus? Would it be treated like a bonus at the end of the year?
Yes, it's a lump sum payment, which is the common, that's the common way that is done throughout the state.
Okay.
Because you don't want to penalize your long-term employees.
Right.
But you also don't, you don't want them so far above the range that it hurts the city.
Right.
So, that is the best way to handle it.
Thank you. Floor is still open for Agenda Item 7 for public comments.
Just one question.
Please come.
Just, my name's Steve Osman, I go property at 951 Highway. Just a quick question. You know, you look at the way sometimes school funding issues work, and people cry about teachers not getting enough money, not enough money, and then a big move comes to give money to schools, and all goes to supervisors. Teachers are still crying, no money, no money, no money. Because if you solve the problem, then they don't get any more money. I'm just curious, in this case, in the study, what percentage of the increase that's being proposed is for entry-level people at the lower end of the scale as opposed to supervisory people at the upper end of the scale? That's all.
I'm Lance.
Please.
I took, I took a look at the report before coming in, and about 95% of the positions needed adjustment, and that's across the board. And I would say so almost every position was affected. When we just took the market, and that's what we went by.
Can you let them know what we're implementing, though?
Yeah, and so, that's correct. So, overall, all of those positions need to be adjusted, but if they're only, I'm looking at the list here about early or so positions, it actually needs to be tweaked to give people or to the pay rate they should be at based on years of service, doing that calculation. So, of those 30, just taking a quick glance, it looks like maybe four or five are actually supervisors, the rest are all, you know, police officer level, public works level, you know.
It doesn't affect department heads and doesn't affect...
No, absolutely.
Public comments still open? Here are none. Further, bring it back to council on a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the salary recommendations of the salary study provided by Codine Associates Incorporated and authorize the city manager to include the salary increases over the two-year period beginning fiscal year 1819.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Osman, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osman?
Yes.
Eric Dina.
Yes. Staff, thank you. Suzanne, thank you. Thank you very much.
Great job.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 8, Discuss Take Action on School Resource Officer Contract Renewal. Chief?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. You'll notice in your packet that there's a request to authorize the city manager to execute the fiscal year 1819 School Resource Officer Contract Renewal. You know, I come here every year for this renewal. This is significantly different. The renewal also includes two new positions for the two public schools that we have in the city, Sirside and Holland, to add a School Resource Officer to those two schools. With that request, the, in light of all the recent events that have been going on, that certainly we don't need to recap how we got here as far as that, but the school board has increased their funding from 30, $33,000 to $52,000 per position. So, therefore, the recommendation would be to add the two positions, and then it also increases the two that we currently have. So, this would renew the contract to increase from the current salary, current reimbursement, I should say, to the $52,000 reimbursement to the two current, and then add the two positions where they will also reimburse the city the $52,000 to add those two positions. Along with that is one patrol vehicle to go with one of the SROs. We are going to try to figure out where to save money, cut costs. We're going to try to figure out a way to absorb that second car in-house by moving some things around and sharing and things like that. So, we believe we can, we can get it all accomplished with the one car.
Thank you. Courtney and I have had quite a number of discussions on this.
I'll have.
I, I don't agree with the school, school board. I mean, I can't see us having kids be protected by someone who has $100 worth of service over somebody who has considerably more. Because my feeling is when you need that officer, it's the worst scenario. You really don't need them for bullying. I mean, foot coaches, parents, teachers can handle a lot of those things. But the worst-case scenario, I want someone there that doesn't have 120 hours. I want someone there who's real. And, you know, we've got four good schools here, and my complaint to my city manager is we're taking a lot of the hit, but I'd rather take the hit than to have somebody with 120 hours. I just don't see how that is providing safety for the kids. So, Chief, how are, how are we going to implement this? Is it put it out for hiring of two new police officers coming out of the academy or wherever? What's your...
Yes, so the implementation plan should be approved tonight. It would be that to post the position, do the interviews and that kind of thing, which, which we've already done just in case, because it's always good to have that on file, whether this is approved or not. Either, if it's not, then we just go on our conditionals. If it is, then we're already a month and a half ahead of it. But I want to just make it clear, because I get asked probably this question the most, the people that we hire are not the people that are going into the schools. We're going to take people that are veteran police officers that have been on the street, that are trained, that we have seen in the circumstances, we see react in high-level, high-stress situations, and those are the people that we would be putting in the schools. Not above finding the right fit for the person that goes into the school. Because that's not a position that you, that I as a police chief walk up and say, "You're going to the school tomorrow." If they don't like it, then they're really not going to, they're going to go say, "Tell them to," but they're not really going to do what I want them to do. That's just not where I want it. It's a place where you want to have a good fit, where they want to be there, they understand the role. Because like you said, Mr. Mayor, there's so much more that they do. It's, yes, they're there for the, for the, you know, God forbid, horrific situation that we've seen happen up too often. But there's so many other things they do that you don't get with a person that's just sitting it off our arm waiting for a bad situation. So, that is the significant benefit. And again, I agree with you as far as the school board, but the significant difference makes that gap much, much smaller and much more manageable, if you like. So, hopefully, if you approve it, now that gap is so much smaller, we'll have all four of our schools protected by better police officers, not only getting that, but all of the other things, and the other programs we have in all of our schools.
I can tell you one thing. I was at the high school graduation, and there was a young man that gave a talk, and it was pretty fabulous. He was Officer Paul, changed his life. And I think, you know, people that were there and heard it, you know, it's worth the resource officer and what he did. So...
It's, and think about the benefit of having that impact at an even younger age while having the way to have that in high school.
Are we going to train them during the summer? I mean, is there schools out that we do? I remember listening at one of the meetings about how training goes during the summer.
Yes, we do. Yeah, we've been doing that for a long time. Everybody, they have DVDs in their car, laptops that have a layout of every single school in the city. So, and then they can, if we get the full layout of every school, we train in and out of all of them.
Right. Other question?
I would just say, I have had a few people talk about this, and I think it's just great from the idea that I don't think it would work that well if we had two of our SROs mixed with two other people that, you know, that, as the county's trying to go with. I would rather have all four SROs who are, number one, familiar with Satellite Beach, your policy, your procedures, your officers, you know, our city, our town, and all familiar that, being able to work as one team, one cohesive unit together, as opposed to having two different types of teams trying to do the same job. And I've had some discussions with a few other residents that have kids in school, and they all felt the same way. Actually, most, the term that I heard more than else was relief that we were going to do this.
Exactly.
That's the word I heard more. Anything else, people were relieved that in Satellite Beach, we were attempting to put an SRO in every one of our schools, that it wouldn't be half-half, that it wouldn't be only a couple, that it wouldn't be part-timers. Every parent that I talked to, the kids said, "This was the best solution that they had heard so far," and it made them extremely happy that their kids were going to Satellite Beach.
And imagine the people I spoke to.
I couldn't drop my daughter off without getting swarmed in the morning, in the afternoons by parents that were concerned. And so, when we had the initial conversations with the school board, there was a concern that some agencies in the Brevard County couldn't, didn't have the hiring power to hire the amount of SROs. And we said, "Well, you know, we don't have that problem. So, why should we get punished for that when we can go out and do it with no problem?" The good thing about the school board is that, you know, I know that we don't, we, having a cost at this point in our budgeting and our financial issues with the hurricanes and the homestead exemption is a problem, and anything like that is always a problem. But the, the officers will be ours during the summer months. They're still able to do it, to do overtime rotations and events and things like that, and backfill some of the problems that the police department has with personnel shortages. So, at some, so some level, we still have some of that use of the officers beyond the school resource officer aspect. And because of that, when they came back with the $52,000, I, I thought that they listened to what we were saying, because they, really, our problem was cost, and, and we felt that they weren't providing enough. And they turned around and came back and did that. So, yes, the, the cost that we're providing, even with this, is a hardship on us. But I don't see us surviving the council meeting if we don't do the SROs. The backlash from the community was just too much with the other options.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think that pretty much everyone that I spoke to was in agreement that they would much rather eat the cost and have a police officer in there as opposed to a volunteer or something like that. And, you know, I started it kind of on the fence, and then the more I talked, the more I felt, okay, you know, I always knew this was the best-case scenario, but I also knew that funding was going to be a nightmare. And we were able to, to make it work a lot better than those initial numbers. So, I'm, yeah, I think it's a good thing.
Do you have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the fiscal year 1819 School Resource Officer SRO Contract Renewal. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Second?
A motion by Councilwoman Gibson, second by Councilman Osman. At this time, open up Agenda Number 8 for citizen comments. Here are none. Back to council. Any further counsel?
Councilman, Councilman Osman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
It's in here.
Sorry. Yes, sorry. Eric Dina.
Yes, the motion passes. Chief, thank you very much. And I know you'll report back to us when you hire them and for those now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And staff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to, everybody good? Nobody needs a break? Moving on, Discuss Take Action on Agreement with Massey Corporation for DeSoto Park Stormwater Facility. Alan?
Before you, tonight is the, sorry, the, DeSoto Park Stormwater Facility, you approved or approved the bid award on April 18th. And this is just to sign the contract to move forward with the project, authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Thank you. And everything's in place, ready to go as soon as we do this?
Yes.
And start the project, the completion approximately, just...
Notice received will be the first week after the Fourth of July, and it's a six-month project, so hopefully less than six months.
Right.
Try to do it before the fourth of July.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from...
I only have one. Is this project considered manatee per...
[laughing]
I mean, I don't want to come to find, come one day and find out that Fox News is telling us there's manatees in the stormwater pond.
[inaudible]
Just want to make sure that's not going to be a problem.
Actually, there is a manatee clause in the permit. It says, "We cannot do any work in during certain times of the year, or if we see a manatee move in," you know, I'm going to say [inaudible]. But, yeah, if there's a manatee in the area, there's no work in the water.
Right.
We love our manatees. Thank you.
And this takes care of 380 acres approximately, acres of that south portion of our city that we need to clean up stormwater, and this is part of that to help them again. Okay.
I noticed that we have, there's a Article B where it says that the contractor will be fined $500 for every day past, am I reading that right? Further agrees that for each calendar day, with the exception of Sundays and legal holidays, that any work shall remain uncompleted after the station's completion time stipulated above. So, this will put them on a pretty tight deadline, right?
Right. Legalized, that's typical of any...
Is it? Okay.
You know, definitely, they don't drag it out.
All right. That's good, because I don't want to see that happen. All right. I'd like to...
Any further questions? Okay. At this time, open up for comm, excuse me, public comment on Agenda Item 9. Here are none. Back to council. Motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Massey Corporation for DeSoto Park Stormwater... for the Soto Park Storm, Stormwater Facility.
Motion by Councilman Osmer.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Counselman Gibson?
Yes.
Counselman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Alan. I know there's been a lot of meetings on that.
(laughing).
I've been at a lot of them. Discuss take action, we're moving on to agenda item 10, discuss take action on agreement with FPL for LED streetlights.
So FPL, of course, does their, their initiative throughout the state is to convert the older style, um, streetlights to LED lights for obvious efficiency reasons. And it, of course, we're excited about it because that also is one of our sustainability goals. And, uh, the bottom line is that they bear all the cost of the installation of the lights and we actually will see a huge, but a small, um, decrease in our electric bills each month, around $83 or so. Um, but essentially, if, if you're in favor of this, there will be 372 streetlights that will be changed out. The example they, they gave us, which is a good one, is if you drive away from Galley Cosway at night, those lights are all going to be our LED lights. So if you want something, you look at, that's a good one there. And, uh, they, they would do this, if it's approved, they would do it in, in phases. They do 100 lights at a time, that's kind of how they order it. And after approval of the agreement, it would take them, they, they estimate about six months to complete the 372 streetlights. And that really is the bulk of all the lights in the city. Um, the only exception is we have to handle separately any discussion of, of lights on the roads that are outside of our jurisdictions, so that would be South Patrick and A1A. But outside that, this is everything else.
Okay. Thank you. And, and when will they start this? Do we have any data?
Well, as soon as we sign the agreement, we approve it, which could happen in the fourth or, they said it takes about six months to do the entire project. So it was a few months for each, uh, section.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
Are they, uh, I know the lights over the Cosway are like bright white lights. Are these lights going to be bright white also?
Yes.
They're not going to be like the yellow turtle friendly type stuff?
Well, the yellow is incandescent, so it's not necessarily.
No, they have LED yellow lights, orange lights, because they use them at, at the Cape now.
Okay.
They use them all around the port and the harbor. That's, that's the only reason I ask.
These are that white, whitish color.
White, right.
Yeah. And they'll be, the, the brightness is, is leveled to what it's lighting. So if, you won't see a, a Galley level light in the middle of a residential area.
Okay.
Further questions? At this time, open up public comment, agenda item 10. Here are none. Back to council. Have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the LED lighting agreement with Florida Power and Lights.
Second?
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Gibson, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Counselman Osmer?
Yes.
Counselman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Patino.
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item 11, which is a public hearing, which.
It's postponed.
Excuse me, pardon?
It's postponed.
All right, that's what I'm announcing.
Okay.
So agenda item 11 was discuss take action on ordinance 1159. This will be brought up again at this point to council July 18th meeting. Um, it is still in P and Z and has not been brought to us. So this is, will be postponed till then. I know, I see many in the audience, you've been at that P and Z meetings, they're still working on it, it's back into their court. They will bring us their proposal on hopefully the 18th of July meeting. Moving on to agenda item 12, public hearing, discuss take action on ordinance 1161.
Ordinance number 1161, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the pension plan for police officers and firefighters, firefighters of the city of Satellite Beach, amending section 46 dash 60 contributions, adding a new section 46 dash 68 share plan, providing for severability clause, providing an effective date, providing codification, second reading of ordinance number 1161.
Thank you. Discussion?
I have none.
Have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1161 on second reading.
Motion by Councilman Osmer.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Open up agenda item 12 for public comment. Here are none. Back to council. Any further counsel? Comments? Lenore?
Counselman Gibson?
Yes.
Counselman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 13, discuss take action on ordinance 1162.
Ordinance number 1162, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget, ordinance number 1141, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1162.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So, um, tonight I'm presenting the mid-year budget amendment to our fiscal year 1718. Um, as you all know, the budget is always a moving target, so, um, these numbers, of course, will change again through the final year of budget amendment in, uh, November. So just kind of keep that in mind, but this is just to kind of update you so you know what is going on. So, um, I've got the slides that are going to be some summaries and then we'll go into the details of them so you kind of understand how we're going to do things. Um, so the general fund revenue overall is going to change a little bit from the original budget. It's going to increase, which is great. Um, but most of that is due to the fact that we received 226,926 dollars from FEMA and received 128,364 from insurance proceeds. Um, the 175, 185 pension contributions were actually, came in a little lower than we are going to be, than we anticipated last year. Those numbers are always something that are a moving target. We don't really find out until we get closer to it, so those numbers have changed a little bit. Um, the Civic Center, luckily, since the renovations didn't get started until a little later, we had budgeted for lower numbers. That number is coming in higher than we originally anticipated, so that's great. So overall, there was a few here and there, little smaller items that increased and decreased. Um, but currently, um, it is anticipated to increase the reserves by 35,890 dollars. General fund expenditure summary, here I've listed all of the increases and decreases to the different departments and we'll go into those, um, individually here. But the total expenditure increase as well is 253,055 dollars. So this is the city clerk's, uh, department. Um, things changed a little bit, understand that the, how the health insurance benefits work. We budget for everything based on what we know, what people have decided they're going to do, whether they're going to be employee only, employee spouse, employee child, employee family. Um, and then we do open enrollment the first of October, so those things can change. And that's what you're seeing here, is some of those changes. Uh, support services is, is a little bit of the same. Um, we did run into some, uh, conclusions where we probably are not budgeting high enough for certain, some of the line items that we have. Um, the last couple of years, we've looked at the, uh, the actuals and, uh, so this year's budget is going to reflect more of that, of kind of an average over the last three years. Um, so we get that as a more accurate number. General government expenditures are the same, the same type of thing. Um, we just realized that some of those line items were, should have been, um, budgeted more closely to the actuals. Um, and then, of course, one of the biggest things with general government, as you will see, it's 163,000 dollars more, 82,376 dollars of that was additional hurricane expense that we had in this fiscal year. Uh, the police department's budget, um, again, it's the same type of thing. With them, you know, with the, the overtime goes up, but their salaries go down, so it's kind of a wash of how it kind of goes, works out. Um, and the rest of their operating expenditures, for the most part, really didn't change much. Fire department is the same way. Both police and fire have those pension numbers in there, so when we lost the revenue on that side, we, we increased the expenses on our side for the fire and police. That's why you're going to see probably the biggest differences for police and fire. Community development, um, actually is going to come under budget, so that's a good thing. Um, public works, their biggest hit was work, workman's comp, um, and that's, you know, no fault of their own. That is something that, because we bid it out every three years, those payroll numbers are given to them every year when they, they decide how much our workman's comp going to be. But because we did a three-year, um, RFP like we're supposed to do, we end up having a workman's comp audit after that. And so that's why the numbers this year were higher than what we originally anticipated. Recreation is the same way, it's actually going to be, um, coming under budget as well. Um, just, you know, things sometimes work out for the best. Our community service fund, um, I've kind of given you a little bit of a summary here. Most of the smaller ones, Sampson Island Beautification, Advanced Life Support, Community Service Police Fund, and the Recreation Trust Fund are no, there is no recommendation to amend those at this point. The recycling fund, however, um, there was a grant that was with, um, FIT, um, that we are going to be matching with. Um, and so that is really the biggest change for this fund specifically. Uh, the stormwater fund, we're going to decrease the revenues by 64,600 dollars. Uh, the original budget had 130,000 dollar transfer from capital assets, but due some of those certain expenditures and unforeseen and underbudgeted, the funding is not going to be available to move from capital assets. So you will see as we true up some of the numbers that we know that we're going to be getting the grants for to the Soto, um, as well as trueing up some of the expenditures that we know are coming in as, as well as adding to, uh, the NEP grants and, uh, the CSB map grant. The community redevelopment fund, um, we're reallocating the 100,000 dollars from the A1A streetscape to the Civic Center renovations. Uh, we amended the community redevelopment taxes, that county portion, to the amount that we actually received because it's all based upon the village and when we actually have to put it in the budget, we have to go on last year's military because we don't know what this year's is going to be. Um, let's see, the capital assets fund, we're going to increase the revenues 101,154. Some of you may remember, there was a cinnamon grant that they had done a couple of years ago and it took some time to get through all the process and we just actually finished it up and sent all the paperwork in and we've received that money. Um, so we have that. We are going to be transferring some money from the general fund. And then the additional, originally this, this account, or this fund was budgeted, um, to take some money out of the fund balance to begin with and we're going to have to, um, add a little bit of additional due to some of those unforeseen expenses that we've had that we've kind of talked about every quarter. Um, like the air conditioners and the football lights came in a little more over budget. We've kind of discussed those in previous, um, presentations. And you'll see that again here, um, in the detail here of the accounts that we, um, had to show, you know, the actuals for those, those that we did not get budgeted for were under budgeted. And the last slide here, I, I wanted to give you an idea of where the fund balances were at the beginning of this year, um, and how we're tracking and what I, what it looks like they're going to be anticipated to be at the end of this fiscal year. Um, so I wanted to be able to make sure that you saw that as well. Any questions?
So it seems to me that our big, one of the big issues is FEMA and the money that we have to use during a storm event. I mean, we had two in a row and it cost us, what, over 600,000 dollars?
About 900.
900. So, you know, we tried to save this, you know, amount of money in reserves, but obviously that amount of money in reserve, if we didn't have it, would have really been in trouble. But that number is really not sufficient anymore if FEMA is going to take years to pay you back. And now FEMA's new rules where they can come back at you 10 years later.
Well, even, even if, we, we spent around a little over 900,000 on the hurricane response, um, we qualified for a little over 600,000 from FEMA. So there's a gap there that we still have to pay for.
Right.
And, and that would normally, if we, if, if we left everything the same, would take us about two years to put back in our reserves.
Given we don't have any more storms.
Correct. And that's, so that's an issue. And then secondly, the capital assets problem is a big issue too, that we'll be going over with you, because everything's coming in more expensive. Um, so, and, and we are struggling to keep up with the amount of facilities that we have right now. So that, 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 we're going to go over that with you in your next infrastructure workshop.
It also just seems to be, it takes a long time to get the money back from FEMA now.
It does. And, well, it's always been that way though, I have to say. I mean, it took a year last time in 2004, it took a year to get that money back. But, um, Irma, we just don't see any real, and, and in sight. And from what I understand, it, we, we collected some data from the rest of the cities on what they were waiting on and it seems like everyone's waiting on Irma. Nobody's really heard anything. And, and even with the Matthew funds, while some are rolling in, it appears that, um, on the federal level, they seem to be approved, but they're being held up on the state level.
Any questions from?
No, I tend to, I disagree with that. I, I know that, as you said, from the federal level, and we have projects out there, that the Air Force has projects, that they still haven't got money from Matthew yet. Never mind from Irma. And I mean, that's, again, federal government to federal government, they don't have their money from Matthew yet. And they're talking about, by the time they get done with all the Matthew requests and really start processing Irma, you know, they're, they're talking five years down the road before they get all their money back from Irma. I mean, if that's the case, you know, we're going to go through two or three years of budgets.
Right.
Waiting for money to, to come along. You know, it's not like, okay, we'll, we'll get it next fiscal year. I mean, you can't even count on that. It, it could be, again, three or four or five budgets down the road before that money ever comes back at that rate. That's, that's, that is a problem.
Okay. Thank you very much. There might be some other questions from the audience and we'll get there. Um, any further questions from council? At this time, open up agenda item 13 for public comment. Here are none. Bring it back to council. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1162 on first reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Osmer.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion? Lenore?
Counselman Gibson?
Yes.
Counselman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino.
Yes, motion passes. Staff, thank you. Um, moving on to agenda item 14, we have a workshop scheduled for June 20th, 6:00 PM, correct, Courtney? 6:00 PM. Um, there will be a presentation on the infrastructure. Okay? Everybody will, please note that. Anybody have any trouble with that date as of now?
That's our council meeting now, you're right. Yeah, I should be here.
So it'll be a six o'clock, remember, we have a six o'clock one now. Okay? Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 15, appointments to board. So we have reappointments of two, uh, and then an appointment, a new appointment for a single position on the library board. Okay?
Should we hit the reappointments first?
Let's please do the reappointments first. We can do them together if that, so choose from council. Okay?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint primary member Tom Willett, um, term ending 7/16/21, 2021, on the Board of Adjustment and firefighters, police, firefighters and police pension plan board of trustees. I'd like to make a motion to, um, reappoint primary member Michael Chase, term ending July 24th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gibson, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Lenore?
Counselman Osmer?
Yes.
Counselman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Patino.
Yes, motion passes. So we have a new appointment, um, for the library board and you're the liaison to the library board, right? And you feel there'll be also another opening?
Yes, yes. One of our last meetings, there was a discussion that there was another member that was not going to ask for a reappointment in the near future. So we're going to, there's going to be two openings coming up here between now and the next three or four months. Because the current Dorothy Gwynne, as we know, in our last meetings asked that she did not, did not want to be reappointed, and her term ends on June 30th, 18, this month. So at the end of this month, her term is going to end. So I would make a motion that we take the first alternate, Pat Patton, and move her to the, a primary position. And then that term would end on 6/30/2021, because that's when the new reappointment for that primary would be done. Is it all right to go ahead and do the other one too? And then, and also, so now that will leave the alternate position open. I would add to that a motion that we take Arlen Massey and put him in the alternate A position there to finish that term ending August 8, 15, 2019.
I have a motion by Councilman Osmer.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion? Then we don't have to re-interview.
Correct.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm, we'll have a meeting coming up, and I'll verify that, but I think what will happen then is, I think we have one of these that's coming up for reappointment, it may be the one in August, maybe the person. It's one of these, the one of the next two that's coming up, and then we could appoint Mary Ann Reese to that position.
I have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Further discussion? None, Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item 16, approve the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the city council regular meeting of May 2nd, 2018.
I have a motion by Councilman Gibson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Eric Pataino.
Yes, motion passes. Any further business before council? Here are none. Everybody, thank you for coming. The meeting is adjourned.